Yeah, we're fine.
Okay.
And you all rested up? Maybe you lucked out and it'd be nice to cool on her all week.
All right, it is nine AM. I'm going to call the meeting of the Cuddington County Board of Commissioners to order. It is Tuesday, August sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance and Commissioner Gable, would you lead us today?
I am in America's face of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I will just mention, we are streaming live on YouTube and if you need to take a phone call, if you could step out in the hall to do so, please, then silence your phone. Item number two, call for public comment. Public comments will still be taken from individuals on items that are not on the agenda. The two phone numbers are six oh five eight eight two six two four eight and six oh five eight eight two six two nine seven. This is for information only and we will address those during the open part of our meeting. Item number three, conflict of interest items. Are there any for fellow commissioners?
No.
No.
Okay, item number four, action to approve the August sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two agenda.
So move second.
Motion by Waterman, second by Van Duzen, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries. Action, item number five, action to approve the August ninth, two thousand and twenty-two minutes of the Cuddington County Board of Commissioners.
So move.
Motion by Johnson, second by Gable. Any additions or corrections? Not hearing any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, that motion carries. All right, item number two, it's the second reading, public hearing and action to amend ordinance number ninety-six, speed limits. I am going to read the ordinance first. So this is amendment to the ordinance number eight dash ninety-six. Whereas in the judgment of the Board of Commissioners of Cuddington County, South Dakota, in the interest of travel efficiency and safety for all citizens, it has been determined that ordinance number eight dash ninety-six shall be amended to include the following described segment of Cuddington County Road number fourteen. Cuddington County Road number fourteen, beginning at the intersection of County Road seventeen dash five, then proceeding west approximately one thousand three hundred and fifteen feet, shall be posted at thirty-five miles per hour. From intersection of one thirty-nine, proceeding east on County Road number fourteen, approximately one thousand seven hundred and twenty-five feet, shall be posted thirty-five miles per hour. So that is the second reading of ordinance number eight dash ninety-six. I will now open it up to the public for public comment and public hearing time on this amendment to this ordinance. Is there anyone who would like to speak on behalf of this ordinance? Not seeing any. I will close the public hearing portion of this and I will now open it up for comments from.
Get a motion first and then then you'll discuss.
All right, so let's get a motion on the floor for this.
I'll make a comment.
Motion by Van Duzen, second by Gable. Okay, now we'll get comments from fellow commissioners.
Yes, you know, this just kind of brings us in line with what the city's done around Lake Compesca, dropping that speed limit from forty-five down to thirty-five, so maintains consistency pretty much all the way around the lake, so. I think it's a good idea.
All right. Any other comments? I think we're all in agreeance. Just keeps things consistent. All right, are we ready to vote? She called the, let's call it a roll call on this.
Gable.
Right.
Waterman.
I.
Johnson.
I.
Van Duzen.
I.
Can't.
Aye. All right, that motion passes. Let's move on then to monthly reports. We'll start with extension. Morning, Jody.
Anna, all right. Well, achievement days went very well. We greatly appreciated the air conditioning in the North Expo as we had our judging in there, our dog show and our four H barbecue. The dog show day was ninety-seven degrees and we're like, how do we do this? We can't really change it because everyone's schedules are at three o'clock, parents ask for time off, so we moved showmanship and obedience inside. We do have a fence that we can make and so we may shift that into there and had our rally and obedience helps our agility outside, so. All of the youth did very well. A big thank you to yous for your support and all of our supporters and our volunteers that helped with that. A few of our champions are going on to the Sweet Sixteen, which is a competition for the northeast corner sixteen counties. That's going to be held in Aberdeen this Saturday, a part of the Brown County Fair. Busy planning for state fairs. As I said, I'm co-chair of the Special Foods and Fashion Review Committee, so we're kind of making sure we got all our judges lined up and everything. And state fair is September first through the fifth. And then we also, with the Northeast Advisors, we're working on our next four H regional teen dash that's going to be held October first. We're going to have it at the Terry Redland Center. So um, so we're doing it out there and kind of prepping for National Four H Week with these youths, so they can, we're going to try and do some little PSAs, public service announcements and have them create their own and then record them for the radio station, so.
The construction out at the state fair grounds, does that affect any of the four H exhibits?
Um, the open class is going to be held again like it was last year prior to the state fair, the weekend before, so that's what they're doing right now. While I was there for the state horse show, we had to enter through a different gate because they had the whole road next to the decks dug up, so they hope to have gravel on it for state fair. It won't be paved or anything, but they do have footings and things in the ground at the, for the new decks, so.
A lot of construction going on out there.
Yes, yeah, it's very busy, so. Yep, and the state dog show will be the week, the Sunday before, also in the Nordby Center there, so.
Drink lots of water.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Shorty. All right, then let's move on to facilities manager. Morning, Steve.
Morning, Steve.
Morning, Steve.
Good morning. We saw it from re. Eight. All right, we'll start out with the egg building. Of course, Jody just got done giving a report. The four H achievement days went very well and the barn has been all cleaned. A couple of auctions coming up in a fiber fair in the middle of September. The government building, we had fire extinguisher training that was conducted on the tenth at the extension building in the kitchen with twenty-four individuals attending. And then I've been working with the phone system and somebody out here. Detention center, knock on wood, no major issues to report so far. The park, staff has been busy cleaning things. They are now in the process of painting the outside of the pavilion. So we had this week getting that all scraped and painted. I had talked to, let's go here, as of last night at five o'clock, bookings for this year with a total of a hundred and forty-two thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four dollars and eight cents.
What were the, do you have that number of bookings just?
No, then, no, that's the dollar amount, dollar amount, yeah.
That's for the park.
That's for the park, yes. And then point of sales, basically firewood and those in LP gas, three thousand, twenty-eight dollars. And with a grand total of hundred and forty-five thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two dollars and eight cents. I wanted to go and try to go in to figure out the report, how many people actually have been camping. There's a way to do it. I just got to figure out which, which one of the reports that it can find that with.
But if they bring a family, they don't mention.
No, they don't mention, I'm just how many sites that were booked for so far for the year.
Sites not individuals.
This is in the past week or so, I talked to the district manager of the Florida Horizons Girl Scouts. They are now drafting an agreement for turning the building of the Girl Scout building over to the county. Once I get that draft, I will send it to Becky to see if everything is legit for that. What they did do fine, they found in old records that they found an agreement that was done. It was in a disk file on there. If it wasn't by chance that they were skimming through stuff, we wouldn't have had no records of previous arrangements that was done, so.
What did it say?
He didn't, he just, it said something about a ninety-nine year lease until they had those old documents of ninety-nine years lease, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, in the weed department, we sprayed a few miles of county six and seventeen for various weeds in along the shoulder and in the cracks for the highway department for their restoration of those, those two sections of road that he's going to have done. Hopefully, they've been dying pretty good out there and so we're just hoping that we can get the cracks all cleaned up after they die pretty good and you're going to get them swept out. Going to be putting in a couple of travel requests to work the weed booth at the state fair for Sunday, September fourth. And then also for the fall weed commission meeting and weed tour, September fourteenth and fifteenth. In the West Nile, Q-LX numbers can vary each week in some of the communities. We've had some numbers that's been down to average of five Q-LX per night. And just recently, we just had last week of a hundred and ten per night in one of the communities, so.
Just in one of those traps.
In one of those traps, yes. So the average is, it's pretty substantially high. Most of the trigger points where the city water town goes out and sprays is ten or above per night.
How many Q-LX? Just so people know what we're talking about. You're talking about the, the species of.
The species that will, that most likely carry the, the West Nile virus, yes. We have had so far a couple of communities of traps that have tested positive from the state that we send in, so. In that result, we're going to be spraying a couple of communities this week, so we had in the result of that, so. And then as far as a report from the state, there's been three Byramec blood donors and one human bus now case so far reported in state as of August tenth.
All right.
Any other questions?
Any questions? We can also take up item number eight.
Yes, this would be.
Declare equipment surplus to be traded, the spray logger.
This would be one of those boxes of though that was on the request of having that traded in, so that's for the new box, so.
You're getting rid of one and keep.
Getting rid of one, we're getting two, going to get rid of one, we're going to keep one so we can put in the spray, in the fogger so we can track the roads that we do fog.
Move to prove.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Gable. Any comments, questions on that? Not hearing any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose, that motion carries. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Did, did the city spray, they do Derby Downs, right?
Yes, they do Derby Downs. I do know that the last report this week, anything out at the lake area, way down in numbers, so they're, so far they're not going to fog that area.
I know rodeo was out there last weekend and everybody showed up with mosquitoes. They weren't, they weren't there.
Yeah.
That was good.
Try weather helps too.
Yeah.
All right, let's move on then to Highway Superintendent Report.
Good morning.
Morning, Ray.
Well, you guys probably know on the bus barn road, they ground that and laid that back last week and also on County Road twenty-three north of Tinkertown, both of those have been ground and injected. And they're supposed to show up Wednesday to start paving the bus barn road. So we'll see if they're on schedule or not, but.
Wednesday, meaning tomorrow.
Correct.
See a lot of happy people when that gets done along there. There's a lot of traffic on that road.
Yes, there is. There's a lot. I will be really happy when that gets done. So we'll see what happens. Hopefully, weather holds out. We don't get any rain. Good stuff like that, so. All right. The guys have completed the top cut on all of our gravel and asphalt roads. That's to help us with blading, because when we chip seal, we have a lack period in there. We can't blade because we're busy chip sealing every, every day. And the weeds get grown up. We've got all that done. Fall mowing will start next month sometime, depending on the weather on that. The guys are busy hauling gravel on spots, soft spots that we had that are just having a hard time healing up this year. Just they won't heal up and there's enough traffic that won't let them heal up. So we're working on that. We're also bringing, brooming off the P rock that we used to chip seal our roads. The city street department is helping with picking up some of the material like on Fourteenth Avenue and out on Fourth Avenue by the lake, so we don't broom all that into the yards, because some of that, there's absolutely nowhere for it to go.
Does that also include like Whopper Road? Do you broom any of that stuff off out there?
We're, we're brooming that. All of that has been gone over once in the, because everything in the southeast corner of this, in the county, got chip sealed this year.
Yeah.
And that's been gone over one time, so they get that done. There's still material there, because there's a lot to broom off at one time, so.
But you do broom it off. Traffic just doesn't beat it off.
No, no, because we have to broom it off to get ready for striping.
Okay.
And hopefully, we have a striping contract this year, something we didn't have last year. I have heard nothing from the state yet, but it did sound like somebody bit it, so.
Yeah, I think I noticed the broom out there yesterday.
Yes, they should have been out there.
When I was coming by.
Yeah.
Motorcycle riders appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah, like I said, that whole south, like southeast corner got chip sealed, so. Be a place to avoid. We had two large culverts rusted out on our County Road nine dash three, which would be four hundred and fifty-eighth Avenue. One was a forty-eight inch culvert, one was a sixty inch culvert. And we had to rent an excavator to replace those. One culvert was, if I remember right, was ninety feet long and the other one was eighty feet long. So we spent a little bit on culverts and this, they were just like a quarter mile from one another, two spots where there's two runs of culverts.
What roads again?
It was nine dash three, be four hundred and fifty-eighth Avenue north of one sixty-six.
What was it, sixteen inch one? The other was?
One was a sixty and one was a forty-eight. And the bottoms rusted out of both of them. There's two sets. It was two forty-eights and two sixties together and one out of each one of them rusted out.
Oh, do you know what, when they were installed, when they were?
I couldn't tell you when they were installed. We have no record of that. This fall, I plan on doing an inventory on our culverts, just like what we did for the towns and townships. And, but we'll do all of our culverts, if they're eighteen, all the way up to the big ones, so that way we can try and avoid. Because we didn't, didn't have any idea that they were rusted out until we had that big rain and it washed funny on the shoulders. We got looking around there was still water in the culvert. You couldn't tell anything why it was washed out on the shoulder. And then when the water went down, bottom was rusted out, so we're going to try and do the same process like what we did last fall for the townships. I've been to two TS and L meetings with the state and Banner Associates. These are type, size and location for bridges that we have preliminary engineering grants with. One is on County Road twenty, which would be one hundred and sixtieth Avenue, or Street, excuse me. And then two dash three, which would be Cottonwood Street. That's up on the north. The other one's on the south end of the county. And these are to discuss what to go back in there, if it should be a bridge or a box culvert, and make sure they're in the right location and all that stuff. And then both of those are over the Big Sioux River. We've also had one on the bridge on Fourteenth Avenue and discussed that. And that, the last time I was here, I told you they were going to put a load restriction on that. And as soon as I get the signs, that will get put on there. It's twenty-four ton for a single, forty ton for a combination. So it's going to get reduced down quite a bit.
That, that bridge is on the list though to get replaced, right?
Yes, yeah, we have a preliminary engineering grant on that one also. So we've got a lot of bridge repair coming. Because that bridge is over two million dollars to have that one replaced. The one south is over a million, the one up north is over a million, so like what I put that, applied for that grant, it doesn't go very far when there's, there's only six million dollars for that grant, so. I've been also working with First District, Christina Kraus and Cindy, our auditor, and Mark from Banner Associates on our five-year road and bridge plan. That should be together here pretty quick. Pelican Township is the only township that has dropped off a five-year plan. They use the old, or not the old, it's new, but what the township put together for, for the plan. The state came out with a new one. But I don't know if the townships will be able to do it. From what I understand, you have to have three, three sixty-five for your computer to pull it up. And I don't, I'm not sure if the township people have that or if they know that. But they're the only ones that have dropped that off and that has to be in by the end of this month, by the thirty-first. So.
Who is the the chair of Pelican Township, or the, the?
Pelican Township?
John.
I think it's John West. I'm not exactly sure, but I think he's the chairman.
Called me on it, so I'm guessing he is.
Yeah, he's the one that dropped off the stuff yesterday, so.
So that, that software issue could be a problem. If that's the case, I mean, I couldn't like do it in a PDF and print it up and throw it out.
I couldn't tell you.
You know, I assume a lot of townships just use their own computers.
Yeah.
I tried to pull it up on my phone and it's, so I'm going to call the state, I'm going to call someone at DOT and talk to them and see if, if we can still accept the ones that the towns and township put out and they mail them in, they can input the data themselves, but we'll see. I will try to have a conversation with them, because I don't, I think it's way too.
It's not realistic, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's quite the document.
Yeah.
Got to have a different way.
Yeah, and I have to have it done in order to be eligible besides opt-out or a levy.
Greg Benteen is the chairman.
Greg is?
Of Pelican Township. John is more needed to clerk for treasurer.
Okay.
Yeah, Greg Benteen is the chairman this year.
All right.
John was doing the work, I think.
Yeah, he's the one that brought it, brought it in and dropped it off yesterday. Our new fuel pumps were installed last Thursday. We're still waiting for the key fob part of it, but we can still use it. I was greatly appreciative to Sioux Equipment out of Sioux Falls and Dupont Electric for getting it going. Our old stuff was running out of time. Also on that asphalt project, there's going to be a change order. I just got what the cost was. There was no tack oil in the bid between the road surface and the new asphalt. So there'll be roughly between twelve and thirteen thousand dollar change order on that, so we can have something to stick on top of the road that the asphalt will stick to as to just putting it on top of the road surface.
Oh, how, when you researched that, how thick is the?
Roughly five inches.
Five inches. It's been two, that's what was on there.
There might have been a little more than that.
Two and a half. Two and a quarter.
But it should be a, it should be a really nice road, because the buses.
Lot of traffic.
The buses beat the heck out of things.
They do.
Yeah.
You know, you don't think about a bus weighing that much, but they bounce and they cruise, you know, they got to get to where they're going.
We have heaves, you know, from.
Yep.
Also some really soft spots along there, yeah.
Yep, and those should be all taken care of, because I was across it yesterday and it looks really good, really good. Both, both sections, the one at Tinkertown and the bus bar road, so. And I guess that's all I have for my monthly report, so.
You have, I've been getting in conversation with my neck to the woods, with the supervisors in reference to a culvert that's been washed out. And Cindy sent out a note that, that has some supervisors here from Waverly and Rowville, let's speak, I think, but it's a big culvert. They've been telling me that it's a nine, just the tube is nine thousand bucks. And, and that's their concern, you know, and then the worst part of it is, it's on a shared road between Waverly and Rowville Townships. And so I just, you know, I didn't give them any answers then. I just keep telling them, call Rick, so.
Yeah, and that's, you know, our policy has been for years that if they can pay for it, they pay for it. You know, if they can't, then we help, but it all depends on what they have in their bank account. I talked to Cindy earlier, what they had at the beginning of the year. There's money in their account to pay for it. And I talked to somebody from the state about the funding we have for those culverts. If they have their five-year plan done, either they opt out or the levy, it would be up to your discretion to take money out of that fund now to help pay for that. But they have to have those things done before you can use that fund.
Would this qual, would this culvert qualify for that program?
Yes, it would.
It's a shared one between two townships.
Yeah, it's, it's right on the township line.
Yeah.
And it's been closed for approximately two months.
Well, since probably May when we had that.
Yeah, it was either May or June. I think it was June.
Is that the one that washed out, washed down?
It's, it's a bad one, because she is, it's.
Is this a main road that gets used or, I mean, is it, is there any residents on there? What, what is the traffic flow?
There is no residence on that road. There's a resident is to the west and that's on the county road. I don't think there's a.
I think there's a fair amount of traffic on that road coming from the barn out there back to town.
Rick, is that where the house fire was here not too long ago? Is that on that road? Because there's a culvert that was out on that road too that had.
That I couldn't tell you where the house.
Road leading to, to Waverly, the paved road up there.
No, this is.
This is a township road.
Well, yeah, I know, I know that, but this, this is a gravel road that goes north and south.
Yep.
Just about maybe two miles east of the interstate.
Yeah, it's roughly I got to think about it. It's two or three miles east of the interstate, because it's one mile west of Waverly.
Okay, yep.
Yeah.
And where this road is, if you go one mile east, it's still county road.
I'm familiar with that.
Well, all the way up to the county line, if you go that way, so.
There was a house fire, coincidentally, that, that I reported from the interstate. I could see it burning off the interstate. And so I drove that, but I was obstructed because I couldn't get past that culvert that was out, so. We had to have the fire department come in from the south and some come in from the north. Anyway, so the culvert was an issue at that point.
So that should have been reported, that that is closed, so that when you guys dispatch out. So that should have been reported that that is closed, so that when you guys dispatch out, you know, to reroute.
Yep, yep, it is. It is barricaded on our mapping system, so.
Okay.
But that could be an issue.
Hmm, yep. Yeah, and.
It's all, it is a big one.
Should have been taken care of.
Think one of the things that they're really concerned about is, uh, that's why game fixture parks, I think, involve the season and then people get out. Sometimes drive around the barricades if they see a rooster.
Yeah.
You know.
Yep, well, that is all on the individual. If you go around a barricade, that's your responsibility.
Yeah.
Yep, when those barricades are there, it doesn't matter. What's there? You're not supposed to go around those.
Yeah.
The thing we need to keep in mind is what have we typically done? And if we're gonna start doing something new, we gotta be ready to do it for everyone. So it's just something we need to keep in mind, what our rules have been in the past.
More next week.
They'll be on next week. All right.
Anything else?
I don't think we have anything else on here, so.
Thank you.
All right, item number nine, action to authorize an application of the Health Improvement Innovation Grant Funds. Sarah, if you would like to come up and. Let us know what. You are wanting to apply for. Thank you.
Uh, okay, here is, and I, um, sent you guys off. You know, or sent it out to you, but here is it. I apologize.
Oopsie. I'm just. Get one.
Just hand it down.
That's all right. Okay, um, so this is a request to, for me to, um. Do this Health Improvement Innovation Grant. Um, this comes out of the strategic planning and the need that the Covington County Community Advisory Council, or Social Services Advisory Council. Has requested. Um, what it is, it would be a health improvement, or it would be a grant to fund the marketing plan for the strategic planning process that we've been doing. Um, the first page that you have is the overview of the strategic plan. We've already gone over that, but I just wanted to remind you of these are the goals and to get us all working together. The backside of that form has the logic model for the centralized services and education program. And really, if you look under the activities under the output section, this is what their vision is for how we can improve social services in our community. Um, they focused on building that media campaign to raise awareness about social services and to have just a coordinated effort in that. Um, the, the rest of the attachment then is the narrative for the grant itself. It has, um. A quick overview at the top for the grant. I do have a copy of the whole thing here, but. Didn't feel like that was that helpful for you? We do have it. Oh, yes, okay, good, yeah. So that's in your packet, then the grant itself is in the packet. The narrative is not the final draft. I have to do some editing and things yet, but it has the content of it. Um, so what I'm requesting is just that you would approve me applying for the actual grant. I wanted you to have the narrative as it stands so that you have an understanding of exactly what we're applying for. It really is just the marketing plan. It would involve, um, the building. A brand, a logo or a brand for the social services group, that community advisory council, it would be branding. And then there would be some marketing for both the strategic planning and then as well as the social service agencies in the community. The whole goal is really to unite social services so that our community is more aware of what we're doing and what is available for them out there. With the intent that increased awareness helps people better be able to find the services that they need when they need them.
I'm going to approve the, uh. Uh, sorry to go ahead with the process of application.
All right, motion by Johnson, second by Gable. Any other comments, questions?
So there's a hundred percent grant, it's not, there's no match.
Right, a hundred percent, and this is, um, I, I mentioned last week, this Health Improvement Innovation Funds. Are part of the CDC funds that the Department of Health received. It was like millions of dollars, may, maybe more. It was a lot of money that the state received. And they're really looking at three pieces of that. One of those is the community health worker, which is where we have our employee from. The second piece of that is to. Have a network of care across the state, and so they're working with the Healthline Center to access services for healthcare systems to be united across the state. And then the third piece is creative, this health innovation grants, to have creative solutions in communities across the state. So this is a, in, at this point, it's a one-time grant. Um, I, when I talked to the coordinator for this, she said there's a good chance that it would be extended and there'd be an opportunity for a future grant. I'm not looking for that right now. We're looking for a one-time grant funding for this particular purpose. Yeah, for marketing. Yeah.
So public awareness.
Yes.
This case.
Did I ever see it?
Twenty-five thousand.
Yeah.
Yep. Yep, that, and that's the maximum that we can apply for this. Nope. All right. Any other comments, questions? Now, are we ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose, that motion carries.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you, Oliver.
Thank you. I wonder if Shauna, if she's gonna come in. There was any, our next items are, um, action to approve discretionary valuation resolutions. I guess we can go ahead and do it. If we have any questions, we can always call her in, so. Um, the first one is the twenty twenty-two dash nineteen discretionary formula. Um, this one is where it is on the apartments only for affordable housing and it extends it for seven years. Zero. Percent. Up to seven years.
I'm to approve.
Motion by Van Duzen.
Call circuit.
Second by Gable. There she is. Good morning, Shauna.
Morning.
If you wanna come on up, we started this. We're working on the first one and it is the one on the apartments where we pulled that one out for up to seven years, so.
Okay.
I don't know if there's any questions for Shauna, anything.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, that's the way that we're in order.
All right, nope. Nope, this is just, um. The one that we had talked about, the new ones that the, the law had changed this year and they're switching these to seven years instead of. The typical five. And for the first six, it's going to be zero and for the seventh year, it will be at a hundred percent.
Did it ever give you any reason why they changed that five to seven?
Um, they're changing these ones specifically to seven to hopefully bring in some more low-income housing. It's just a way.
And it's for apartment.
It's for apartment buildings only specifically, specifically, yep.
This is specified for low-income housing.
It is specified for apartment buildings. There is one that is. Spelled out for low income, but it is specifically for apartment buildings. But their hope is that they will bring in more low income.
Okay, not designated, no writing in it, just the hopes that it's gonna be for.
Yep, there is one. If you look. Um, on the actual.
You want that one or do you want this one?
No, this one. Um, the first one just states any new commercial residential structure with four or more units, that's an apartment building. But the second one actually goes into any new affordable housing structure. Um, and then it actually talks about the percentage income median and things like that, so. There are some, but it will be for all apartment buildings that. Are built, but, um. Ninety-nine percent of them currently are in TIPS and when they are in a TIF, they forego the discretionary formula anyway, so.
It's one or the other.
It's one or the other.
All right, do I have a motion and a second? Is there any other questions on this one? Not hearing any. All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose, that motion carries. All right, the second one is.
The second one is, um, our original discretionary formula that we had just changed last year. Um, to change it to the zero percent, but we had to take the apartment buildings out of this one since they will be getting the new seven year. And so that's what this one is. It's just the apartment buildings are taken out, but everything else has stayed the same.
And that is up to the fifth year, they still get zero, so sixth year they go up to a hundred percent.
Sixth year they go to a hundred percent.
I was thinking this did the same the seventh, but the seventh actually go.
No, the, nope, and that's because the law actually states for the seven year that the seventh year has to be a hundred percent.
Okay.
Good.
Need a motion on this?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Motion by Van Duzen, second by Gable. All right, any comments or questions on it? Not hearing any. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, that motion carries.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Shauna. All right, uh, item number eleven, Natalie, I think you were going to take this one, action to advertise and hire part-time state's attorney administrative support to fill a vacancy.
Yes, I am. Good morning.
Attorney was in court this morning, so.
Yes, Becky, um, has court, so she just asked if I'd come up. We had a resignation in, uh, the state's attorney's office with a part-time legal secretary there. And so I would just be posting and hiring to refill that position.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Gable, second by Waterman. Any comments, questions? Not hearing any. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, item number twelve, discussion possible action to enact a burn ban. We won't have. Any issues with that this week. Item number thirteen, review of twenty twenty-three budget requests that we pretty much went through.
I don't believe we've done the state's attorneys yet, so I, I don't know, you might have to see what.
One left. Okay. Item number fourteen, action to approve claims for payment.
No, nothing for fourteen, fifteen or sixteen.
We'll move on then to item number seventeen, action to approve travel request.
The first one is to authorize the admin specialist at the extension to, um, travel to the state there. For the purpose of setting up the forage booth. And that is a one-day travel request. I think. Yep. Um, and then these next three are all for the emergency management director. One is after the fact. He had to travel to, um. Cissitan last week for point of dispensing training, a pod training, and his liaison suggested he get this approved because he couldn't get it approved before he left. And then the other two are also for the emergency management director to attend. A, um, emergency management advanced professional development series course on evacuation and reentry. And then the second one is a score event risk management and it's a recommended prerequisite to the, uh. South Dakota Emergency Management Association Conference Course.
Motion by Gable.
Sorry.
Second by Waterman. The only question I have, so that pod, was that just normal daily business or was that something over and above extra than what?
It was a meeting. It says he went up one day and returned the next, so I'm not sure.
Cause I know there's some things, you know, that.
Must have been two day, it was, it would be something that normally you should, he, he should have had approved, um, but he didn't get enough notice.
Yeah, it was a very, very late notice.
Yeah.
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 Come from them.
Yeah.
They. Almost like a second thought.
Mm-hmm.
And he hadn't gone to a pod train.
Yeah.
And being that was kind of the emergency management's direction. Your area, the whole line yards, and he just drove up and drove back the same day.
No, and I don't have a problem.
Yeah, two days.
I don't have a problem with that. I just didn't know, you know, sometimes if it's ordinary business, you know, when it's required and when it's not required, so.
But if there would have been enough advance notice from them.
Yeah.
Yes, it would have been filled out ahead.
No, if he was traveling to expect something, but since this was a meeting, it probably would have been.
It does qualify, cause, yeah.
You don't get enough notice sometimes to come before the board.
Right, all right. Motion and second, any other comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, that motion carries. Item number eighteen, public notices, possible quorum of commissioners could be in attendance. Um, there is the SDACO and SDACC Annual Convention, September twelfth and thirteenth in Pierre. Um, we have the search and rescue raffle event going on the eighteenth this Thursday. It starts at five thirty. There could possibly be a quorum of commissioners at that. Anyone else have anything that you can think of? Um. I have something for the open. Do we wanna do? I guess we'll do executive session first, uh, well. I just have something in, in relation to the. County conventions and so maybe I'll wait and do that during the open. We can start the stream again probably after.
So there's likely to be a decision after the.
No, I don't believe so.
First.
Go ahead and do it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll go ahead and just, uh, read. So this is a letter and I'll forward it to all of you, um, just trying to scroll down to it. From our SDACC President Dean Karski.
Yeah, yeah, we got.
Did you receive it?
I got that.
Okay, so he just said here, greetings. Did the rest of you receive it?
From Chris, I think Chris Jacob's important.
She did forward it, okay, cause I received it. I didn't know who all received it. Okay, so just encouraging everyone to try to attend your annual conventions, your quarterly meetings. Um, it just makes us more effective as a group and so when there's issues that come up, we are in, um. You know, we have that support, no matter if you're big or small, at times you need more. And it just helps to be part of that. All right, so that's taken care of. Then, uh, we'll go into executive session under contracts. Okay.
Negotiations.
Contract negotiations, yep. So I'm looking for a motion.
Make a motion to go to executive session.
Motion by Gable.
Second.
Second by Johnson. All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose.